November 23rd, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. So please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's now move to consideration of the agenda. Agenda tonight is pretty straightforward. It's we're here to talk about the village business, commercial zoning district discussion. Is there any discussion about the agenda this evening? And have a motion to approve the agenda? The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. One, two, three, I guess seven to one, seven to zero. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven to zero. Does anyone this evening have a conflict of interest as it relates to this agenda? Okay. We now move on to public comment. We have one person in the audience, happens to be my son. I don't know if he has any comments or not, but if he does, please state your name and put it on the address and hand it to the secretary. Hearing that, I guess we'll move on to the actual purpose of the special meeting and move into the content itself. So as we move into the special meeting, I just wanted to make a few comments. I'd gone through the material pretty well myself. And if recall, the last time we decided that we set up a process and we agreed on a process where we would have potentially two meetings to consider this particular Chapter 10, because it's a very important chapter. And we wanted to make sure we had enough time to discuss this particular content before we go into the hearing, which is December 6th. And at that time, we may vote. We would certainly hear public commentary and then ideally, we would be in a position to vote on this material of stepping it forward or not. There's there are two planning commission members that were part of, actually more than that, I think, three, three planning commission members that have actually gone through this material before, before the new members came on board. So four, okay, I'm sorry, I'm losing track, I'm sorry. And so I think it's important though, for those newer members, including myself, to have the time to go through this. Also, I would say this is a very, very important section because this actually really gets to the meat of new businesses coming in. What do they need to look like, what are the requirements for their building and so forth? So I would like to suggest the kind of two options for going through it this evening. One would be, we could kind of go board member by, or I'm commission member by commission member, just kind of walk through all of your comments. That's one proposal. The other one, which I would recommend more is that we kind of go section by section. And that way it kind of pushes, you know, dialogue about the particular section and just be very free form and just really want to encourage discussion on this. So seems like the second option is probably the best one. So we'll just kick it off and ideally, if we get through this tonight, that would be great and we won't need the special meeting next week. That'd be my preference, but on the same token, I don't want us to rush through this. I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. Okay? So let's, yes.
Before you get into it, two things. I want to make sure everybody has their microphone turned on and is speaking into the microphone as we have dialogue. But also, we should have a motion to take it off the table before you have discussion. Since the item was tabled at the last meeting, somebody just needs to make a motion to remove the item from the table to have discussion.
I'm sorry, you mean like this, the next meeting or?
Right now, like now to start discussion on it, you would take it off the table.
Okay.
You just make a motion, take it off the table.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to take the item off the table from the last meeting for discussion at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is passed, seven to zero. Okay, so moving into the discussion. Section 10.01, the purpose. I'll start this off. I had two questions, one not directly related to this, but one that does relate. The first one was a question maybe for Sarah or if someone else wants to volunteer, was just kind of going through the differences between the permitted use and special use. The permitted use, my understanding, if it's laid out there, if somebody follows and meets those criteria, they they can, you know, set up, establish their business in that in that form. The special use means it requires a permit, right? It requires a special use permit and has to come to review. Could you kind of walk us through that?
Sure, yeah. The simplest way, I guess, to explain it is that the special use has a public hearing related to it where the site plan reviewed is not. They have a similar process. They have to have a site plan, you know, that's engineered or documented. Unless it's a single family dwelling. That's something that you can just do a land use permit, but otherwise, if it's commercial in any way or multifamily, it's a site plan that comes in front of the planning commission. It's reviewed. If it is a special use permit, then it has that public hearing and then there's a decision made. The site plan permitted use, those are uses that you find to be compatible anywhere in that district with the neighborhood, the traffic they're going to generate, all of kind of the nuisances they may have. Those permitted uses are found to be compatible with the neighborhood. The special uses are items that are compatible in certain locations in that district where you would want to put additional conditions or you may say, because of certain criteria it doesn't meet, it's not permitted there. So there's more discretion on the special use side than on the site plan. The site plan, if they put everything on there, they cross all their Ts and dot all their Is. The planning commission really has, should not deny it unless they'd like to go to court. Where the special use has the discretion that it can be denied as long as there are certain standards that are not met. That definitely has more discretion in it.
My second question on Section 10.01, in regards to kind of where, I guess, where is the computer?
So that's what that, the purpose is kind of is drawing in some of those concepts from the master plan. And then this, this whole article and the commercial article should be based on the master plan, the language that's in there to achieve those goals. The only way the master plan gets implemented is through the zoning ordinance. So if there's something in the master plan that we want to see happen, we need to make sure we put it in the zoning ordinance to make that happen.
In paragraph E under that section, it says, "To guide future development of these villages consistent with Torch Lake Township Land Use Plan." Is that the same as the master plan?
Yes.
Okay. I get confused when you say all the changes.
Yeah, and I don't recall off the top of my head if it's called a master plan or comprehensive plan right now, or if it's called the land use plan. They're all one and the same.
So I guess my comment then, we should tie those together, whatever the languages we settle on, that they're consistent. Because I had the same question that Barbara did, I was confused by that. So other questions on that first section? All good? Okay. We can move on to Section 10.02. Do you have any particular thoughts here? Questions, concerns?
And I've got a question that might be more for Sarah. It's not on 10.02, but it's on something that I feel like might be valuable to insert before Section 1.02. And that's the process. Would this not, would this be the right place or the wrong document to help define the process? Before we get into permitted uses, which in my head, it's conforming and non-conforming, but permitted and special, the two different processes that you just described.
Yeah, that is laid out in another part of the zoning ordinance. So the site plan review process and the special use process. I think that there, it can be clearer and that's something in that zoning ordinance rewrite that we're going to work on, clearing that up. So it's very specific. I mean, it is kind of done here, but it will get better in the near future.
So we'll address that later, because when I went through this and made notes, I also, I put together notes on the application itself. And whether or not we had planned to make any edits to that. I'm thinking about the ease of use for the applicants. Then I also wrote down the process itself, which is what I just talked about. Requirements, how they're, what the requirements are for permitted use versus special use. This is just really addressing the the process. I'm sorry, this is really addressing the requirements. But if we're going to be, if we can handle more about the application itself and the process and the ordinance, then I'll save some of the comments I would have had for tonight for that effort. Because I, what I have seen, I've not been an applicant. It's a bit confusing to some folks on what to do and how to do it. This will address part of it, but I think the ordinance could help. I think probably help the township, but more importantly, the applicant, just understand the process, the correct process to go through. Because I have heard some comments and boy, I was told one thing, but it ended up being something else. And when I read the ordinance and then this, I understand why there's some confusion.
I think that what we've discussed in the steering committee about the rewrite, it's way better. What Sarah has to propose, it'll help a lot, because I agree.
One thing that might help based on that is just, not necessarily for here, but just maybe sharing with the planning commission when it can, some of the documentation around that, so we could see what that looks like. Because it might help give us better context. I mean, we'll probably be done and with this before that anyway, but still going forward as we get preparation for future meetings would be really helpful. Because I had similar questions and I was never a commercial applicant, but I was a residential applicant. And I do recall it being kind of confusing. The zoning coordinator at the time, the zoning administrator at the time was helpful helping me walk through that. But yeah, it was flat out confusing. And I thought I was pretty well prepared going into it, but boy, it was, took a lot of effort.
And when I was going through this, I thought, well, we could be tempted to try and address every potential application and that wouldn't be the right way to go about it. But for permitted, it ought to be straight, pretty straightforward. For the other uses that need more input from the public, need more input from the planning commission, need to have additional, that's where I think a lot of my comments sound like it's better off for the ordinance itself. Because we shouldn't address every potential. We would be here for a long time.
Right.
And still not get it complete.
Other questions on Section 10.02?
I had, I just wanted to also say that being new to this, and I kept going back to the commercial development and our master plan and trying to see the coordination between the two. And I, I didn't see it that much, other than that one statement in the very, you know, that we would have consistent with the Torch Lake Township. Land Use Plan. So I totally agree with what you're saying. There was just one, and I don't, it's just kind of a pick you anything, but in 10.2D, why was the ice cream shops and ice cream stores connected with the convenience? It just didn't seem like it was, would go on that line. And I would think the ice cream shop would go with the bakery delicatessen. But maybe there was a reason for that, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
They were incongruent, so I just.
In the eighties, they must have been similar enough and.
Oh.
Or somebody had an ice cream shop that was also a convenience store maybe at the time.
That seems like a good tweak though, just to make it a little more consistent. And I just had a question around how do we, this list, it seems pretty complete to me and probably going to Bill's question, but where did the list come from and was it, do we have any sense for that? Was there anything to compare against to see if, like other examples, to see if it's pretty exhaustive or not?
You know, I think it was, this is a list that started when the ordinance started back in 83, 84. And I'm guessing they would start by uses that were existing in the community. It could have also come from somebody, this is the ordinance they pass everywhere and these are the uses they put in there. But you can see through here, some of the uses and how they're grouped together and you go, oh yeah, we had that at the time or we still have that. So in zoning, zoning is a permissive item in in the state of Michigan. So if it's listed in the zoning ordinance, it allows you to do something. If it's not listed there, it's not allowed, because we can't think of everything. But if somebody comes along and says, I'd really like to you do something and it's not a use allowed here, they'd have to come and amend the ordinance and go through that amendment process to add that use in. So we do try to be pretty comprehensive, but you also notice there may be some newer uses that just are not even considered because this was drafted in the eighties that we didn't have. And that'll be some stuff that'll get cleared up in that rewrite as well. Some of the uses, well, they'll be either broader uses, they won't be so specific as what they are in the ordinance. And there'll be probably some additional ones that are similar, consistent with the district that maybe we don't have that are either up and coming or we've received phone calls and people that'd like to do this and they're told, no, we can't because it's not a use listed here. Because we are so specific, you know, the fact that we're talking about retail stores and we're calling, you know, a hardware store versus a different type of a retail store. What's the difference between a hardware store, you know, and a grocery store? They're all retail. So do we really need to list all the uses? Probably not, unless there's one that really is just a headache that you need to pull out. But typically, those are uses where you can generalize them. So like if you have a hardware store with like an outdoor lumberyard, you know, sometimes outdoor lumberyards are a bigger issue. But you could just, instead of saying something like that, you could do retail. And then the next in a special use would say outdoor storage yard for any of the uses allowed. It's just a broader way to deal with some of those things instead of trying to pick every single use in there.
I've got a suggested text edit then for the beginning of this section. Tell me whether or not it's a, uses consistent with village, comma, retail, less than 3,000 feet. Uses such as, with a list. So this beginning of a list, it connects it to the purpose, which is village level retail. I'm guessing that's why with the proposed edit here goes from 15,000 to 3,000. Then I think the list below it is probably okay, but if it, it's, they're not really similar when I read the list. And lumberyard isn't really similar to some of these, but if we talked about uses such as. So.
So what?
It's suggested, a list that could continue depending on the application. Oh yeah, that fits. It's consistent with the village, the master plan.
Right. So what was the language you were suggesting?
I was proposing to start it with just the word uses. Uses consistent with village retail, comma, less than 3,000 feet. Period. Uses such as. And then the list that's there. And then in E, it would be professional services such as. Or professional service uses such as.
Excuse me, I like that, that those thoughts. The only question that is more of a question as opposed to a concern, because I'm not sure one way or the other is the term such as. Such as suggests that the list could be longer. And do we want that? Or do we want to bifurcate it off so that it doesn't allow for somebody to have a way more of a liberal interpret? That would be the only question about the such as piece. Everything else makes a lot of sense.
I think when the M-88 subject came up, we were looking at like, oh, is it like this enough? But it didn't say such as. It wasn't specifically listed in here, but you're looking for that specifically. If you open up such as, I could relate it to a lot of things, right? I think it opens it up a lot.
It does. Again, we're looking at the master plan and it's the same time with the ordinance in this. That's why I was trying to connect you with uses consistent with the village field, village aspirations, village plan. You know, because we describe it all as village, commercial village. To me, that's probably not a lumberyard, it's certainly not less than 3,000 square feet. But there's ambiguity in it now and even in the language I suggested. I'm trying to tighten up some of the ambiguity, so it might not be such as unless, unless we're able to get across a fairly common understanding of what we might village retail. Square footage starts to define that for me.
Yeah, that's a key one as well. I think that's, those, those two words, 3,000 are the most important things up there in a lot of respects.
I did have a question on that. How, what was the, what was the information we had to say, it shouldn't be 15, it should go to three as opposed to five?
Yeah.
Or seven or two?
That was a discussion that the planning commission had about it and it was to reduce the size to try to limit certain size or kind of bigger businesses from coming in. And it was, you know, 3,000 was felt like, okay, we can still have a business. It could be a villagey feel business, but if you want to go larger than that, then it needed to be a special use permit. So we still would allow, allow something larger than that. It's just instead of being a site plan review, it should be everywhere in the village. We're going to a special use where maybe it's more appropriate on the main street instead of one of the side roads or something like that. So, but the 3,000, you know, it was tossed around 3,000 or 5,000 and the planning commission kind of settled on 3,000 at the time.
Did we, I think we talked about this last meeting. Do we look at any other townships ordinances to say? Or did we look at our last three years of applications and say, you know what? You should come in at about 2,800 or 3,200?
Yeah.
Or was it more of a feel?
Yeah, it was more of a feel. We did look at, I want to say Northport, the village of Northport. And they reduced their retail down to around 3,000 square feet for their village. But, you know, and I mentioned it in the cover letter, the villages that are similar to our villages are really undefined. Like they're unincorporated, they don't have their own ordinances and they've kind of just been around for a long time and that's how they developed. And so there, it's hard to find that language and what it should look like. And not be too structured, you know, as a village where they actually have, like the village of Northport has its own government and function.
Yeah.
You know, but the 3,000, I believe they went down to 3,000 for their retail in Northport as well. Elk Rapids did?
I was gonna, I think I remember being in the audience when the planning commission was discussing that. And it seemed, some things that were really helpful was there was a listing of different types of businesses, people, businesses people knew. So like Village Market in Eastport or Eastport Market that had, I don't remember how many square feet it was, but when you listed those, it was really helpful, I remember for the planning commission to kind of say, oh, okay, 3,000 seems about right. Because it, things that were a little bit bigger than that, we're like, wow, okay, that's a little too big. But then things that were, that seemed like it was big enough to, because 3,000 seems kind of small. But in actuality, the one, I think he was in your, in the write-up of the McDonald's, it was like about 2,000 square feet.
Yeah.
You know, I think of McDonald's, that seems like a pretty good size, you know, there's a place to eat and all that and cook and bathrooms and everything. And so I was like, no, that's not that restrictive in the end of the day.
I agree. That, that's what made it for me, just the examples that I was familiar with and thinking of, like going into Elk Rapids and what's the size of a shop there? And imagining that here in our village, that's, that's what set it up in my mind.
Any other thoughts on the current section, 10.02?
My only thoughts on, on Northport and what was the other town that you said?
Elk Rapids.
Elk Rapids, I mean, that's like downtown. We don't have a downtown here. And I guess, you know, I'm thinking, if somebody wanted to build something bigger than 3,000, then they'd have to do this, go in front of the public and. So it's not necessarily that they can't do it, they just have to get it approved by the public.
Right.
You know, because I'm thinking something like, what if I wanted to put something in like an archery shop? You know, I would need something bigger than 3,000 square feet, you know, to have somebody shoot their, their bow and to buy bow and arrows, you know? So I mean, to me, I think 3,000 is a little small, but because we're not a downtown. That's just my opinion.
Any other thoughts about that, about the size or?
I think it's a, I think it's a real fair point. I mean, Elk Rapids is in line commercial and each one might, you know, each, each store might only be 2,200 square feet, but collectively, it's a building, it's, it's, it's different than what we have and probably different than what we'll have for at least a long time. Yeah, I had the question, Jason, for that reason, should it be five, should it be three? And was, I guess, maybe hoping that, boy, almost all the applications that come in seem to be about that. And we base it somewhat on that. I'd be fine with either. And then you said public approval, it's really public input. But I get that it feels like approval because suddenly you're not getting it approved over there. You're coming in here and it opens up for a lot of people to come and weigh in on it. I think that's a good thing, at 3,000 feet, is that necessary? I mean, maybe I'll propose that we, we couch that till we go through more of it. And if we see it with a second meeting, it might be worth looking at at least a couple of years of application to say, 3,000 seems to fit 90% of what we usually get or, oh, you what? It happens to be closer to 6,000.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. I think the other thing, Sarah, that might be helpful is just if maybe, you know, trying to help us understand the history of what the planning discussion, planning commission discussion around it, kind of where they landed, because it was tweaked around, it seemed like quite a bit. If there's any history, if we, you know, want to propose upping that a little bit. And I agree with the comments about, you know, the, the, the nature of what Jason had just described. Alternatively, I guess I would say it doesn't necessarily mean they can't do it at all. It just means the public's going to know about it and you're going to force that process. So I'm, I'm not, I don't feel passionate about it either way, frankly, but I think it's a good discussion. So let's table it and bring it up towards the end, if we can recall and see where it takes us from there. One other very small question for me, just in the last board meeting, there was a lot of discussion around the 31 scoops. And then the, the expression, the, the term tavern kept being is, does tavern had a, have a particular meaning in state law of Michigan? Because somebody kept saying tavern as it relates to beer and wine.
They can get a tavern license, but in zoning, not really.
Okay. Okay. So tavern could mean mixed liquor or two.
Distinction that it, that applied more to the liquor control.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then we don't need to worry about it here then. The only other thing that came in tasting room, I mean, I know what a tasting room is, but it's an image that comes up in my head. But is that clear enough definition as opposed to? I mean, is that, does everybody have the same definition of what a tasting room is? Because we make a distinction between tasting rooms and then kind of retail here and then manufacturing or production down below. I just want to make sure that it's relatively clear between what the delineation between a permitted use versus a special use as it relates to tasting room, that is that clear enough?
I was going to say, we have a definition. We do have a definition.
Okay.
For tasting rooms specifically. That was why in 10.03, the winery with retail and tasting rooms, I took out the retail with tasting rooms because we had the tasting rooms just above it as a regular use. Or I'm sorry, a site plan review permitted use instead of the special use.
Can you read what the definition is?
Of tasting room?
Yes.
A room used in conjunction with a winery, cideri, meadri, microbrewery or microdistillery where the tasting of wine, fruit wines, beer, cider, mead, brandy, spirits and non-alcoholic fruit juices take place at a charge or nor charge to the individual. And the retail sales of winery, cideri, meadri, microbrewery, microdistillery products, incidental wine-related non-food items, products by the bottle, container or case for off-premise consumption and wine-related packaged food items are allowed as provided herein. Tasting rooms must comply with MCL such and such, which is the liquor control.
That's pretty thorough.
Yeah. That may be the definition from state law, but it might, I think it's got a few more words in it.
No, that's, that's helpful. That alleviates my concern, I don't think anybody else has a thought of it. Anything else on 10.02? Move on to 10.03? As people are looking at it, I had one thought around the whole COVID. This, this relates to the restaurants and taverns with outdoor service. And it was just in the whole COVID, we had a lot of these kind of little greenhouse things set up, yurts or whatever. Is that still outdoor service? Or I would think it would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, usually I would move outdoor service into just, I either wouldn't distinguish between a restaurant with indoor or outdoor service, or say, outdoor service is this kind of a separate use, but maybe it's permitted by right. Or there are some townships that have a separate outdoor service ordinance, like licensing provisions, if they wanted to get an outdoor service that has some additional requirements. Some of them were implemented COVID-specific, but they've decided to bring that over and allow those licenses as a permanent opportunity for those businesses. So it's kind of one of those things, what do, what does a community want? If you want it to be something you kind of incentivize and encourage to do it, you make the process easier to get through. And not that it doesn't have the same material, it's just, you know, you would say it doesn't have that public hearing, because the, the public hearing really does discourage applicants from going through the process. So you can, you know, you allow it as an easier process. But if it's something that you have concerns, you know, does this outdoor service fit in some areas that are zone village business? Because maybe it would end up in the back somewhere, you know, like down an alley almost, and that's not appropriate. But maybe it's fine. You know, we don't have a huge village business area to probably be concerned about where it would go with lots of cross streets and things like that. So, you know, it's, it's, I don't know. You know, I don't know what, what your concerns would be, or if that's something you want to encourage.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I certainly wasn't trying to discourage it or encourage it one way or the other. It was more just thinking about those, and that seems to be a trend that is sticking, particularly up here with the climate being the way that it is, you know, and they actually can be pretty neat facilities, really, really well done. So I guess if I had to, you know, choose, I would say I would probably be more encouraging of them, particularly if there's guidelines around them, because it allows facilities to stay open more and do more business in the, in the winter and attract more people. So I don't know what that means here, if anything, as far as the language, it was more just a general question.
And that's something, you know, I can take a little bit harder look at in the rewrite as well, because maybe it would make sense. Because outdoor service, you could get some nuisances to the neighbors, because it is outdoors, and if they're playing music or, you know, something like that, I think we'd want to try to keep control of that a little bit, but at the same time encourage it. I mean, everybody wants to sit outdoors in the summertime when they're here, you know, if you're thirsty or if you're not, unless it's too hot, then you want to sit indoor, you know. But I think outdoor dining definitely has a draw for all seasons. And so I'd be willing to, you know, take a look at that and make sure that we have something that makes sense in that rewrite for that item. Because I think you're right.
Other questions on this section?
Which section are you on now?
I'm sorry, we're, we're on 10.03.
Okay. One thing I haven't seen in here anywhere is recreational facilities, you know, like squash courts or, you know, any sort of indoor recreational facility. I don't know if that's something you want to put in here, or do you see somewhere where it would fit, and I'm just not seeing it?
I think that would be a good use. I don't think we mentioned anywhere on the ordinance, like a recreational facility, you know, that's more than just a park, but like if somebody wanted to put, like the YMCA came in, you know, where would that fit in our ordinance? And I don't think we have that use listed anywhere in any district. I may be mistaken just because I don't remember the commercial off the top of my head, but I think that in the village, that makes sense. It's a smaller, more dense, walkable community to have some of those facilities.
Good. It's a good point. It's not, even things like a small exercise facility.
In, in 10.02, under C, exercise, fitness, and yoga, if I'm an applicant, I'm going to assume my pickleball court fits that.
Studios.
It's not a studio, but yeah.
You know, because I've, I've got an edit to the very beginning of 10.03, and it's kind of the danger of a list. Because it, so I'll, I'll read it with my suggestion. Special uses allowed within the village business VB district shall consist of, and I reorder them to put them in the order they are actually, and personal services, retail, and professional service uses, other than those described in the ordinance and in section 10.02, as opposed to other than those on the list. Because it says, if I have a 2,800 square foot use that I think is just great for a village, but it's not on that list, I now have to go through the special process. So there's, there's some of the ambiguity. So which we want, a list that we know won't be complete, or try to invite a conversation across the hall to say, this seems like it's consistent with what we want to have in a village, and therefore you're in the conforming or the, the normal process. I'm sorry, I intentionally tied that language a bit to the ordinance too. That way we don't have to be concerned with pickleball fits exercise or not.
Would it just be a special use?
No, in, in that, in that scenario, it'd be that that fits the permitted use, because it's part of exercise.
Oh, okay.
Can you lay out your example for me one more time? The 2,800 square foot, I guess, like, not quite following it.
The way I read section 10.03 right now, the third line goes, personal and professional services, other than those listed in 10.02. So it says if, you know.
If you're not listed there, then you're, you have to be a special.
Then I have to be a special use.
Even if it's very consistent with what's in.
Right. I guess I'm poking around at the idea of what we feel fits within the village, kind of like, I think we're serious, say, what do you want to try and attract to be able to go through, not have to go through the special use permit, not have to go, something, yeah, it fits. Wait, it's not on the list. Everybody liked the idea of a pickleball court, and it's less than 3,000 square feet, but now I have to go to a public meeting, and somebody's going to tell me to make it a green court instead of a blue court, you know?
I, I see your point. I, I, I definitely read it the way, I think it was intended that if it was, if it was a permitted use, then it's got to be listed. And if it's not listed, then by definition, it's a, a special use. And that was led to my questioning around, where do we get the list of them? And how do we know that's a broad enough list? That's, that's the never-ending, I guess, conundrum here.
I mean, that sentence could almost be its own bullet and say, you know, retail uses, retail stores not listed in 10.02 are a special use. So if it's a, which I think is a little restrictive, honestly, but, you know, because if you're going to say similar uses or such as, then you're splitting hairs to if this retail is similar enough to this type of, instead of just saying retail. But I think that kind of intent was if it's, you know, if it's retail and it's not specifically called out above, it's a special use. If it's personal services and it's not called out as one of those uses in that list, then it's a special use. But it's kind of hidden in here in this introductory paragraph for this district.
Well, isn't the, the special use in the public hearing and all that, doesn't that give you the exercise of the discretion to decide, maybe it is in one of these, and if the Planning Commission after the public hearing says, well, you know, that really is a permitted use under whatever.
Yeah.
Doesn't preclude you from having the special.
Yeah. I'm hoping that's the case. Yeah, a lot of my interest is in the process.
Right.
Right.
So I'm not trying to follow us up in this language, but I think the process, being more clear on the process would say, yeah, it might not be listed, but my pickleball court is also not a special use. I just need to go and talk to Sarah, or there's somebody in the planning, you know?
But I don't know, it, it's like, I think that's the whole purpose of the special uses and the public hearing and the determination by the Planning Commission, is that's who uses their discretion to figure out whether it fits in the permitted or not. I mean, that's, that's what I would think, rather than going to Sarah, and then, you know, somebody could end up mad at her because she said, yeah, that's the same as this, but we, somebody else doesn't think it is.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So I think we'll clear some of that up in the draft, this language. I don't know if I'd go too far down trying to fix what that says right now, because I think it's going to just continue to open up this can of, how do we deal with this? So I think it's not ideal, but it's okay. It's not a huge trap, so we could deal with clearing that up in the, in the rewrite.
You have a couple of things in here, Sarah, that are not permitted, sexually oriented businesses, commercial channels, and drive-through establishments are not allowed. Since we have opted out, I think we have, Torch Lake Township has opted out of having adult-use marijuana establishments.
Mm-hmm.
Should that perhaps be listed there as well?
Yeah, we could add marijuana in there.
Yeah, I had a similar question. Where, where is cannabis in all this? Lot of talk about alcohol, but nothing about that. So I think that would be good to address.
I don't know the history here. The board must have voted a ordinance for adult use to not allow it. That's the only way to do it. Otherwise, otherwise it's allowed. Say that again?
10.02, Section D is also in 10.03 as Section Q.
I think Q is larger than 3,000 square feet.
Oh, okay, yep. I did not catch that.
Bigger is special.
Yeah, other thing is I'm a little confused about short-term rentals being on this list, because don't we not allow short-term rentals?
We do in the village. That's one of them. We do in the village and.
Just the village? As a special use.
Yeah.
But not in the residential.
Not regular residential, just in the village.
So on the, the greater than 15,000 square feet was struck. So permitted use, I guess this is for an event, correct? No, it's a retail store. And a retail store greater than, any retail store greater than 3,000 feet, regardless of size, is a, is a special use. We don't have a cap. I'm, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just asking the question, what drove that striking of the 15,000, just feeling didn't have, wasn't necessary to do that, or?
Yeah, I think because it was, because it's going to be a special use, that if it gets too large and is incompatible with the neighborhood, then it would be denied for a special use application.
And is that ability there to do that? You can deny, you can say it's just too big?
Right.
Okay.
But at what point does it become too big? Is there an objective there, or is this strictly a?
No, I mean, it would be based on, you know, that's, be based on the parcel size, the location, and then also what they're willing to do to negate some of those issues that would come up, you know, either with landscaping or some other buffering walls. It may be a good location. I can't think of one here, but, you know, if it sits down low, maybe it's not a problem for the people up high or the other way, you know. So there is, in the standards, I think it's built in enough that if it gets too large, we'd be able to say, no, that's just not going to work.
Another question, is outdoor event defined?
It is.
Somewhere, okay. Similar to the, whatever, the tasting room, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, okay, we don't need to go through unless people want to hear it. I just wanted to make sure it was laid out. Any other questions on 10.0, I guess, 03? And there is not a 10.04, is there?
Oh, no, oh, 10.04 is village residential, and we didn't make any changes to that, so it's not in this portion of it. That's not subject to the moratorium. The village residential district is not.
Okay.
So in the net, when we get to the public hearing, I'm only going to put in the sections that we're actually changing. The amendment is just the changed language, so it'll start to get shorter and shorter, too.
Okay, good. Anything else on 10.03? Move on to 10.05? Quick question, where does 41 feet come from as opposed to 40 or 45? It seems so precise.
Where are you?
I'm sorry, the, Section 10.05A, building height in this zone shall not exceed 41 feet. I was just curious, 41 just seems so precise. I was curious, and there must be a reason behind it. I'm just curious what it is.
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't have the history with that.
Then there's the 21 feet below as opposed to 40 feet and 20 feet or 45.
21 has to do with fire and ladders and access typically. That's why it's, usually it's right around that.
Maybe the 41 feet comes from that as well, I mean.
I don't know if we had a ladder truck at one time that could only reach that high?
That very well could be, and we don't have ladder trucks anymore. All we have is a triple beam extension, and that would be about the max of it.
Okay.
But there, there is, I, I'm sorry, I want to take over the conversation. Okay. In that same part, Part A, just below where it says 41 feet, so down about the second to the last sentence, it says, the height of the uppermost floor capable of being used for human occupancy shall not exceed 21 feet measured from. So that could be interpreted as, that is the floor level, the literal floor level. So in other words, you'd have a third story, which really is incompatible with the, the fire department can't handle anything that high here. We'd have to call in specialized equipment. So maybe if, if the intent is to have two floors, it should be this upper level instead of the word floor. The height of the uppermost level capable of being used for human shall not exceed 21 feet.
Would it still be 21?
Could be. An average, as a rule of thumb, 10 feet to a story.
Okay.
Other thoughts, 10.05?
Could I have the rationale for no parking in the front? What was?
On?
Residential, Village Residential and Business District, so 10.05E.
Oh, E, okay.
There's no, it all has to be at the side or the rear?
It's just for visual appearance of parking, so that it's not, that's not what you see the parking lot. It's not the first thing you see. It's more aesthetically pleasing to see the front of the building or a lawn. It also encourages people to, typically to move their buildings closer to the roads, they can put the parking on the side and the rear instead of pushing the buildings back from the road, so you can't see the building, you just see the parking. It's just a preference of the community, whatever you'd like to see.
Is that something that you added in, or?
Yes. That was something, yeah, I added in, maybe one of the first versions, since it's not highlighted, related to the parking. It just, usually it encourages the buildings to move up closer. In the village, you're looking for kind of a more dense, compact development, so people, you might be walkable, have sidewalks eventually, but it kind of... So people, you might be walkable, have sidewalks eventually, but it kind of, um, in the village, when you move the buildings in closer to the road too, maybe not specifically here, but it helps to slow down traffic because you have this visual feel and kind of confinement. So you slow down. Instead, when you have wide open spaces, um, and the parking lots next to the road, it can speed up traffic actually. I don't know if you've ever experienced that. If you go, usually it's on the passing lanes when you're going behind somebody really slow and then they feel wide open and they speed up and get back to the slow part, you know, like, you know, or something like that. But you can kind of use that scale and the buildings to help, um, slow down the traffic a little bit too.
You know, I look at that and I, the way I look at it, I, I plow snow for a living. So I look at it that way and where do we put our snow? To the sides of the building and the back of the building. So, I mean, I, I look at it like that, at that perspective, um, where it may be easier to have the parking in the front so you have room to put the snow.
Well, and I'm trying to put it into context. We're talking about Eastport and Torch Lake Village, right? And I, I'm still trying, I'm, I am struggling a bit to what the master plan is saying and for me getting a visual of what do we want this to look like in 10 years? And, you know, I, I'm, I'm not clear.
Yeah.
I have a similar reaction on the parking, partly because structure's there now and of course they would be grandfathered. There are so many that are really nice looking. Torch Lake Cafe is a great looking build facility, you know, and it's, their parking's right there and the building was there and so it's kind of makes sense. So it feels, you know, and I recognize this would only be for new businesses coming in, but I think it, it's a, it's a good point. Um, it does seem, and it, and it almost suggests that it is going to eventually look like a downtown, you know? Been in that, in that case, then you'd start seeing the building, the sidewalks and those things. And is that really what it will look like someday or not? Um, who knows, but.
Yeah, I, I think, that's what I, I said in the last meeting, we each have our own vision of what we think a hamlet is for a village, and we call a little bit of both. When I think about what we have, it's parking in front. My own vision of Eastport, Thursday, boy, it'd be really cool if it was, um, parking in the rear and some facades that made some sense together, but we don't have that. And I think even in the, in the land use plan, we probably won't have that. The land use plan might have to have a specific section that's called a specific plan for hamlets. So that we paint the 10 or 20-year vision of what do we want those areas to look like? What kind of uses do we want there? And then probably the parking needs to go in the back. That if we don't have it in now, we may approve nine things in advance of that and we won't get that changed. So that's the dilemma we've got. What are we, what a B when we can't in common define it? But this is one of the, I know that this is one of the things that never gets changed. Once it's, once, once I have parking, you're not going to, you got to pay me to find a way to put the parking in the back to make it look good. So that's the, that's the value of keeping it in. But it's also not consistent with what we currently are.
Right. And it's not consistent with the fact that we're trying to kind of keep large businesses out. And those are kind of the ones where you see that, that you just see parking, you know, a sea of cars if you're parking in the front. And aesthetically, you, you want to cut that down by putting them in the back or the side, but we don't have anything like that. So I'm not sure that we need to have it in here now. I mean, sometime in the future, we may want to say, well, we're starting to get a lot of big businesses wanting to come in. Maybe we should work on the aesthetics of those big businesses.
Was there, there was, was there much conversation around this within prior planning commission meetings or in this particular section or not?
I don't recall. I think it was one of the items, you know, when we first started talking about this, I said, we can do this, this and this as ways to try to kind of design standards and what things look like. Um, and that was one of the items I threw out there and the planning commissioner's like, oh, okay. And, you know, added it in. I'm, it, this is your ordinance, so I'm indifferent in that aspect of what you want it to look like, so.
I think it, one suggestion might be we, we take it out for now, but flag it somehow. Rewrite, we'll be potentially looking at this again anyway. And then it gives us maybe more time because we want to take another look at the master plan. And if we start to think about that vision, then it might become more clear how we would handle this. Cause if we had more congruence around what that would look like, it would be obvious one way or the other.
I think so. I'll make a note to take a look at it again in the future.
Does that work for everyone else?
For now, we just take out that second sentence of E.
Yes.
About the parking.
I guess I would give ourselves this caveat, put a deadline on when it's done because I personally, I think it's kind of an important part of the zoning. If we're going to have some consistency, we are the planning commission, so if that's what we decide we want to have, it's fine to not, not do it now, talk about it, but not an open-ended table on the discussion. We need that timeline, be much to complete this. I think to be responsible to the township.
I think that, that, I agree with you. That makes good sense completely. I think what I, my challenges would be, what would that timeline look like? Because I think that master plan re, you know, relook or revisit would be important to do first and break all those things. And that's something we would like to do this coming year, certainly.
Aren't we due in 2022 for the revision?
Um, yeah, for a five-year review. Is it 2022? Um, I feel like we have more time. 18 is when we adopted this, so.
23.
It's 18. So, um, you know, the, we have a lot of moving parts current, you know, we've got a lot of things we want to get done. So we've got, um, planning commission wise, the next thing to talk about is kind of the airport situation, the master plan zoning ordinance related to the airport. Um, and then we also will have that zoning ordinance rewrite's going to come up sometime in the spring for the planning commission to start your review of that. Um, ideally, it would be good then to come back to the master plan. Typically, you do the master plan before the zoning ordinance, but the zoning ordinance has, there's some issues essentially that need to be fixed sooner than later. So we're going to deal with those. So, um, once we do the zoning ordinance and I think the airport situation, we can get into the master plan potentially during our discussion on the airport. Maybe we'll find that we're right back to the master plan anyways and it kind of blends right into that conversation. Um, you know, cause I think that'll take some time and we'll look for public input on that. Um, and it's a large enough topic to deal with, I think, all on its own, but it may be something we don't get into place until we're looking more at the master plan as a whole. I don't know. I don't know exactly what that, what that should look like. Um, and so I would, when we get to that, I'd encourage the planning commission to dive into that and come up with a plan.
And when it, when that is, that process is done, I mean, I, I'm trying to envision what properties are even available. And, you know, some of this probably would be irrelevant if there's no room for parking or, you know? So I, I have no idea what is out there and could be developed.
Yeah. And so you can kind of look at some of those and when you're doing it, you know, I always encourage you, consider what's there, but then also really think about what you want it to look like. Because just because what's there, you know, doesn't mean that's what it's going to look like forever. I mean, you look at these small cottages that are on the lakes that are getting torn down and these huge houses that are being built there. I mean, think about that for your village areas too, as redevelopment happens and buildings get remodeled or torn down and rebuilt. Um, it'll take time. It's not something that'll happen overnight, but I really would encourage you to consider what's there, but don't let that necessarily stop you from dreaming about what you really want it to look like so that we can write the ordinance to get there.
Have you seen the map? We have a map that's highlighted for the business.
Yeah, I think I have.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, to, to know exactly, okay, this, this little piece or that big piece or, yeah.
I have one more comment on this section.
Real quickly, just to address Bob's concern about the timeframe. So, so the timeframe to address that would be after review of the master plan, I think.
Yeah, the parking, um, what I'm hearing from you is that our current master plan doesn't really address it, so you're not comfortable addressing it in the zoning ordinance. So we'd need to go through that process of updating the master plan.
So I'd say that, even though it may not be due until 2023, there's no reason we can't do it next year, correct?
Right.
So, end of next year, both of them. Make note of that and process it forward, so, okay.
Cause once we go through the master plan process, we're going to come back to the zoning ordinance and have some changes. So this will definitely be one of those things that we'll want to implement or look at implementing.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a, a suggestion on this section.
Okay.
And y'all can say, hey, new guy, pipe down, if you want. But when I read it, there, general regulation starts to kind of read like regulations. Then it has required landscaping. And then there's some sections that aren't really titled like parking, ought to say parking, like landscaping does. And then it says additional standards, but it doesn't really address standards. So it's really mostly wordsmithing, but I, but I think it would be clear to say, there's some general regulations and then there's some design standards. The design standards to me would be landscaping and I, probably without the word requirement because we're talking about the standard, parking. I eliminate F completely. Um, the next section to me is about building placement and that's probably more regulation than it is a design standard, but that might be up for interpretation. The next section is really more of just a commercial for how important the visual environment is. Excuse me, you know, promoting creativity. It's not a standard. Then then in the next page, it does get into some standards, roofs, floors, trash, recycling, but it doesn't address lighting, noise, signage or operating hours. Operating hours isn't a design standard, but to me, lighting noise and signage could be. So I think there's some missing sections, excuse me, and, and mostly just a redefinition of the headings to go through it, I think would be more complete, more clear. I said a lot and I also didn't do it in Word.
I understand what you're saying and I can work on, uh, the layout of that, um, and some of the information in there. The lighting and the signage is, are addressed in another section of the ordinance. Parking kind of is too, um, but we don't have a lot of details. Landscaping kind of is too, but not a lot of details. So, but I think I can reorganize this and change some headings and make it more consistent. Kind of when I did it, it's like, wow, here's the language we started with and I'm trying to add to it, but I'll clean it up a little bit.
It's, it's mostly all good content.
Yeah.
Part of it just is me as an applicant going through it. I'm starting to go back and forth in pages and I am getting a little confused on a regulation from a standard and I'm not quite sure what a regulation is.
Right.
That's what I read when I read through it.
Yep. I can clean up some of that language for you.
Just a real minor point, Sarah, on F I that, that, um, again refers to village district. Is that supposed to be village business district? I mean, because this isn't talking about the residential, is it?
No, this is only the business. You know, didn't we, we changed it to hamlet up above. Maybe we can change it there too.
You have that same sort of sentiment expressed a number of times in here. And I guess it should just be the same, whether it's hamlet or village business. Just make it consistent.
Those are good suggestions, both, both of them. Question on the impervious surfaces, um, and then the lot coverage of all buildings. It, it was changed from 70 down to 50 and then from 85 to 55 for the buildings, um, for the, for the 70 to 50 for the building and 85 to 55 for the impervious surfaces. And I guess now it seems like it's too tight for the business. Before it was, maybe the pendulum swing swung a little too far. So I'm just throw, toss it out for people to think about is, is that, are those the right numbers? They're just guidelines, but, um, does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. And we did, we did kick that around before, uh, when we were meeting on these and without some idea of what 50% of a particular lot is going to look like or 85%, you, you can't hardly know whether these are the right numbers.
Yeah. To, to me, it depends on the site and more importantly, depends to me on, on the grading.
Right.
Cause if two, you have 20% impervious, if it's not graded well, it's all going to flood somewhere else. That's not really addressed. I don't think it's supposed to be really addressed here and I don't really have a handle on what the right percentage is, but to me, I know when a site drains or when a site doesn't self-drain. And that's what we ought to be trying to protect here.
And when does it become necessary to have, um, commercial establishments put in, you know, drainage ponds?
You shouldn't, right. You should maintain all of your own stormwater on your site, but this was something, I mentioned this at the subcommittee meeting last week and I've not done any further research into it, but, um, I was at a different meeting in a different township and I was told that stormwater is a rec, they have recommended guidelines in Antrim County. There's no actual stormwater requirements unless the local government adopts a stormwater ordinance. I don't know if that's a true statement or not, but that's something I would need to look into further because if, if there's no required stormwater situation, then your stormwater goes wherever it wants and you're not required to maintain it on your site, which is an issue.
Right.
Well, and certainly if you take Torch Lake Village, I mean, you know, so this is a balance between making it conducive for businesses to come in, but at the same time not have it just be a parking lot and all the stuff runs into Torch Lake.
Right.
Or the bay for that matter. So, you know, and it is, it is going to become a bigger issue and I don't know that we can necessarily solve it now and it probably is going to require a bit more research and it may be research that's not going to happen in the next week or two weeks. So it may be something we have to park and flag again because it's, it's going to be a thing that creeps up on us here, especially in Torch Lake Village, because it's really close, it seems to me.
Yeah.
And it's downhill. I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much, you know, the response, not the responsibility, but it's the burden of the property owners between.
Yeah.
US 31 down to the lake, their property's going to receive all this stuff. So that's where, that's where it's going to be dealt with. Yeah, absolutely right.
55 is better than 85.
Yeah.
For what we're trying to accomplish, yeah.
I agree with that.
It seems to me that Heidi Schaefer was in talking one time and she had a number there about percentage of impervious area on a thing and what, maybe not the optimum number, but a livable number in terms of percentage of covering it up. So I'm going to call her and, yeah, see if she, see if she, if that would help.
Not a question, just a comment. I thought the Northwest Michigan invasive species thing was very thorough, much like the tasting room definition. Other questions and comments on 10.0, whatever we're on here?
I just have one last comment. This is, I think, the first place I saw it, Strike Village from Hamlet Village. And so I just said, we might want to just make that consistent throughout the document. I don't know which I like better.
I'll make notes, yeah.
I kind of like hamlet. I don't know why.
I think we should look, discuss something with the slope of the roof. I think we've, we've already, we kind of discussed that a little bit already, that several businesses here have flat roofs. The senior center, uh, the Eastport Market, I believe the old Sunny's 31 scoops, that's a flat roof. Um, I know the Village Market, I mean, they put some big compressors up there on those flat roofs. That would be hard to do with, with any kind of a pitch.
I had a similar thought, Jay, um, Jason, because we, we did talk about that last time and, um, because of the, you know, with the compressors and things and the nature of the, um, kind of managing the cost of construction, a lot of times, flat roofs can be easier to do. And I was, I was wondering if can you, can we get the same kind of effect from a visual appeal standpoint with a fascia coming out or something to do that to make, kind of drive the business so it doesn't just look like a box, but doesn't require the whole business to have a, a big pitch.
Like a facade on a parapet. Like a facade or a parapet.
Guess, curious for others' thoughts on that. But personally, I think that is a little, it ma, it makes it tougher. I, I got a little bit more comfortable because the commercial did not have that restriction. So this is just vision, uh, village business. But, but it still struck me as, I could see where, you know, that would be more difficult for a new store like another 31 Scoops coming in. And now they've got to have a much more potentially costly construction.
Sarah, you said last time that that came from a builder, was that?
Uh, the 512, or the 412 versus the 512. But, you know, a lot of times you'll see in villages where they require, especially on the residential component of it, but some sort of a, so that it's a pitch and it's not a flat roof. That's very intentional to require that, to try to get buildings that feel more villagey instead of so commercial-like. I can see the, you know, putting the compressors and items on top. There could be something that they could do to make that work as well. Maybe with parapet wall on something. I don't, you know, I don't know. I'm not in the construction business, but people make it work or they bring them down. Ideally, in our village area, we wouldn't have really large buildings that are going to have that kind of service needs. You know, they, at 3,000 square feet, hopefully, you'd be able to put a pitched roof on it or the appearance of a pitched roof or something.
Going back to the map question. In Torch Lake Village, where does the, kind of essentially, where does that village business boundary go to? I guess maybe I haven't. Trust you, bind you.
The map is in chapter 24. And so for Torch Lake Village, it's how's that come out there?
So it's about halfway between 31 and the park, ballpark.
Right. Yeah, what's the road that comes out right there? Travers Bay Road? Third Street? There's just four blocks on the map that are village business.
Because the one, I'm kind of talking to myself in circles here. But when you think of that, in that area, and that there's a vacant lot, and it could be, become a business, and there's houses on both sides. And all of a sudden, boom, you put a flat-roofed building in front of, or between them, you could see that that would be problematic unless you kind of forced it from a look and feel perspective visually with the fascia, facade.
You know, and our, yeah, the business districts allow for that single-family dwellings. You can have the, you, you will have a combination of the business and single-family just by the nature of the uses allowed there. So it is a little bit more consistent to have a pitch on for the commercial component so that it fits into the neighborhood. But you can understand the other side too. So it's, it's one of those aesthetic things. What do you want it to look like?
Yeah, we, we use North Port and Elk Rapids as an example of 3,000-square-foot buildings. And I mentioned that we're not that, because we're not downtown. But every one of the buildings downtown Elk Rapids is a flat roof.
Yeah, I don't know that they have that pitch requirement in there.
I'm not sure about North Port. I haven't been there in a while.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what their ordinance says about that either.
They have flat, some flat roofs, similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when the, and the facades on the front are those kind of older-looking buildings. It's a little bit more of a, an older, you know, classic downtown, small community.
I think that's what we fight with a little bit, you know, because so many villages have this downtown. And so the flat roof makes sense, you know, when you have buildings right, you know, you don't have a lot line, you know, the building is the lot line. So the flat roofs work, because if you had a pitched roof, that doesn't really work very well. But when you're dealing with some of these other village designs and what that looks like, you kind of have to commit one way or the other, I guess, if you're going to look downtowny or commercially, or if you're going to look more residential.
Could you say they shall have a, a minimum, minimum or the appearance of?
We could do an appearance of, because then somebody somehow could create some sort of a facade if they wanted to, or be creative with it. If you like that, is that a reasonable compromise?
What others, others feel about that?
Yeah.
Works?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And the.
It accomplishes everything.
Yeah.
If you need to build a flat roof, you can. Can hide the equipment if you put it on the roof and you get a look and feel.
Yeah.
But it's what we've done to it.
That works.
Great idea.
I mean, because that's what you're interested in, is the appearance of it.
Also, just a comment on paragraph C there. The facades, using steel, we would allow that as long as the front wears more of a natural feel to it. So I think that works. It's a good change. Any other questions or comments on that? I think we're doing pretty well.
See, the, the new building, green building there on 31, that's all metal all the way around. Is, is that in, would that be in violation?
That would not be able to be built exactly like that with these regulations. I mean, it's not, it'd be, it's a non-conforming building right now. Anybody that's out there that doesn't have the, the.
Wasn't that building just built a couple, what, how long's it been there?
It's not, not that long.
So did this all change then? Or are we changing it right now?
We're changing it right now.
Okay. So just, so just so I understand, so if we do make that change, then something like that can't be built anymore?
Right.
On the side of the road facing, okay.
Yep, just that road facing side. So they would have to put either, they'd have to put a basically facade, a false front on it or a different front on it. They could still build it out of steel, but it'd have to, on that front side, they'd have to do stone or something.
And this, this is that one.
Do you know what I'm talking?
Yes, right, just south.
Just south of the restaurant on the west side of 31. I think it's a plumbing or HVAC company or something. I'm not sure.
They didn't.
Right, just south of Brownwood.
Yeah. They, and the building, I mean, it's not a bad-looking building, I don't think. But it also, I, I would be worried if every new building that came up looked like that. It would start to raise some concerns. But it's a good point. I mean, going forward, that building in its current form would probably not have been approved.
And it's, like I said, it's only three years old, so. And then going to, to the windows, I do not believe that that has 40% windows in the front either.
No. Yeah, and I think some of these design standards are kind of, not to say that that's a problem, but, or to get away from a building that looks like that in the village areas. It may be more appropriate in a commercial or an industrial area. But when you're in your village where you're trying to create this sense and feel of this village, and then you have this big pole barn with no windows, it's not very warm and inviting typically to your village area.
That section has one word that needs to be added between allowed and facades. That C, section C, bottom line, shall only be allowed on facades, not facing the road right of way. And then, I think, not be permitted, there's, where do I, just, I don't understand that sentence. Seal exterior shall only be allowed on facades, not facing the road right of way. Period, I think.
Yes. I had too many not permitted last time, or not allowed or something.
Any other comments? If not, let's move to chapter 12, or section 12, chapter 12. This is commercial. I have one question. It seemed like in section 12.02A and all the listing of things there. And I, why is it not a similar structure of how it's outlined in comparison to village business?
Village business was added at a later time.
Okay, so the question is, can we make the two more similar? It, it would be easier, and again, it goes to an easy, ease of applicant perspective. Just, obviously, there's differences between the two. There has to be. But just the structure of how the, the material's laid out.
I can look, I'm, I can't guarantee I can make that happen, but I'll look at the other districts and see if there's something more similar that would work. I mean, we could, we could take the A out and move that paragraph over and then just change all the numbers to letters or something too.
Yeah, it was, it was really, it wasn't, it's more just general, you know, it's a nitpicky thing. But I think it might be easier for somebody to dig, to digest if they're comparing, because that's what I was trying to do, and I was struggling.
Again, on this, I don't see any recreational facilities. If somebody wanted to, you know, build a soccer, indoor soccer facility or, you know, something like that, it, I don't see where that would fit in here.
Is that something you'd want to put into the use by right or as a special use?
That use would probably fit best in number 11. You could, instead of making it another number, or I think what, I think what Andy's proposing a good idea, that change the heading structure in this to be more like specs in the other one. But I think indoor art, music, dance. And how did you describe?
Recreational.
Recreational. To me, movie studios is very different than indoor art, music, and dance. That, that should maybe be the separate bullet or the additional number. If, if you go against Andy and decide to make it a whole bunch of numbers.
I, I don't care which direction, it's just as long as they're the same between the two sections.
Another thing I don't understand in this particular section is why we have airplane hangars at designated air parks when we don't have any designated air parks. The master plan doesn't make any mention of airports or air parks at all. So I don't, I don't think we have a designated air park. So why are we providing for that?
I had a sim, the similar reaction to that, just wondering. I mean, I know we obviously have the air, we have an air park. Or it's not mentioned currently in the master plan, for whatever reason. And it just, does it create more issues than solutions by having it here? I guess is the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if you wanted to take designated air parks out and just you leave airport, airplane hangar, you could do that. The concern I have about removing the use completely is that all of our hangars that are next to the existing airport are in the commercial district. We would be making all of those non-conforming. Not saying that's the right or wrong reason to do it, but maybe there would be something clear, to clarify that. If it's because it's in the designated air park, if that's the language that's bothersome, or if it's the whole use itself. This was something that was added in later, because when the airport, the air park was approved, this use was not in here, and we did not call out airport hangars in the ordinance at all. And so I don't know when it was added in, but air, airplane hangars is a use that was added in at a later date.
Another concern I have about that, though, is I don't think a lot of those airport hang, airplane hangars at that existing facility are in fact being used as hangars. Does that bother anybody? I mean, if people are using them as storage units, and storage units are in here somewhere, then we don't need it.
Yeah, I guess if the, the fact that they would be non-conforming, I mean, yeah, that's an issue. But of course, there's a lot of things that are going to be non-conforming. If we did change the parking, a lot of buildings are going to be, businesses are going to be non-conforming. And I think that, I think what it really emphasizes, whatever we do with, with number 19 here, is that we have this kind of incongruence here between the master plan. We have an existing air park, and the ordinances don't quite, we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. And, and we've talked about that, so it's not, that's no surprise there. So the question is, do we, what do we do with 19 here?
Is that something you want to deal with now? Or is that something you want to wait until we go through that process with the master plan and zoning ordinance for the airport, airport area? You know, that's kind of our next task on our list.
I would wait.
First, I'd rather see hangars dealt with in an air, a section of airport zoning in the master plan and in the zoning ordinance.
I agree, not just listed here under commercial use.
Yeah, I, I think it would be well, more well-suited in that area rather than here.
To have a separate airport, airport, air park.
Yeah.
District.
Yep.
Yeah. I agree, I don't think it needs to be here.
So you got one stay, two go. I need more.
Did you, I didn't understand your point.
I would just wait until after we do the master plan to do anything with that. I would leave it as is for now.
Oh, you, you're suggesting leave it in as it is right now? Is there particular thought around that that drives you to think that way? Or just because it's worked and, I was trying to think, is this, just trying to understand what your thought process was behind that?
Uh, I just think it's all going to be more clear once we go through that master plan process.
Yeah.
Instead of potentially moving it twice or dealing with it twice.
I think it's going to be a completely different thing under a new master plan. And, and even the zoning ordinance, instead of being a part of a, a commercial zone, it would be its own.
Zone?
Zone, its own, its own zone. You know, that makes more sense to me for that than, than having it stuck in here and not even being accurate, because it's not a designated air park. So I guess I'd like to take it out, just because I think it's very confusing to have that here. And then when we do those rewrites, then we can decide, do we want to put it right back in here? Or do we want to do a separate air park district?
Where does it fall in the meantime? Because it's commercial today. Where is it, where do we put it?
Well, you're right, it does have to be somewhere, right?
It's still commercial. I mean, it, some of it's commercial, some of it's residential, that's the other thing. It's not all one thing. But if we had, you know, a specific district for that use as an air park, we could then define better what the residential component is, what's the hangar component, what's the runway component, you know? And leaving this in here is just, it just sticks out, I think, is, it doesn't make any sense to have it in here.
Well, maybe, but those lots where, where the hangars sit now technically are commercial lots, aren't they?
Yes. Yeah, so we have limited, if you look at the map that's in, in chapter 24, there's, the commercial area is in front of the airport there. There's one commercial piece down Nicholas Road, just by itself. And there's a piece just kind of north of the airport, that's commercial. Kind of in that area. And then down at the corner of Crestwell and 31.
Kings, yeah.
Yeah, that's commercial right there.
Yeah, like taking out the designated air parks, to me, is like going backward, because that would mean that Dick at North Bay Excavating could put an airplane hangar there, right? Because it's.
Right, right.
So we're opening it up.
Wouldn't make much darn sense.
Right, it wouldn't, but he, you know, you never know.
Right.
Do we have any residential designated property that has an airport hangar on it? Or an airplane hangar on it?
This use is only listed right here in the commercial district. That was part of why the discussion for the airport needs to happen, because.
Right, right. So, so the, the clear path is we have this broader strategic issue of. So, so the clear path is we have this broader strategic issue of an air park that's not in the master plan, that we don't really have ordinance currently to set up for. That is, it seems like we're all in agreement on that. The question is, what do we do? Do we keep this, and I agree with Barbara, it is confusing. Do we keep this as it is for now? Address this thing and then take it out, or we take it out now and address it? And so I, I don't feel that strongly either way, I guess I would just ask for people's view, I mean, I, it is confusing. I probably would lean more towards taking it out because it seems like it's just a, it's just a hanging thing there, but it also troubles me that we actually have hangars with planes in them on property here in the township. If we take those words out, there is no word to accomplish any of that, and it's a significant aspect of our current business, right or wrong, being in here is just a fact.
Technically, Barbara said that it's not a designated air park now, but will it become a designated air park once we address it in the master plan?
Well, we can, I mean, that's, that's my point, is that we're going to have to address it anyway when we look at the master plan. And so it seems to me, we take it out here, then we can address it as part of the master plan, and then we may need a whole other zone in our zoning ordinance for designated air parks.
You said it's not a designated air park, like?
As of right now, it's not.
We're not, you mean in the master plan or?
Apparently.
Yeah, there's no mention of it.
Right, there's nothing in the master.
I mean, you and I designated as an air park, right?
Right, yeah, so that's where, where, where does it need to be designated, I guess? That'd be my question.
In the master plan.
That's the only place.
I think the intent when they put it in there was because the Torchport is a Torchport air park and that was meant to be an air park, and that's kind of the premise it was approved under, but we've never had the use of air park listed in the ordinance. So it's more tied to that that's what the plat name is called, and air, you know, it's Torchport Air Park is the plat name for the subdivision versus a district or anything like that. And I don't even know, I couldn't even tell you 100% that that is what its full name is, you know, have the air park in there, it may not say that.
So, I'm sorry.
Well, because section 1202 addresses buildings that would be altered, I think it stays in as airplane hangars. My proposal would be, keep it in, airport hangars at the site currently called Torchport, or something that takes out the word designated, there are hangars there, and this section allows for alteration. So to take it out would say, we don't really have them there, that's not true. And then we address it in the plans, we take out designated air park and just say what, what it's known to be, which is a current site called Torchport. Leave it in, it allows for alteration.
I personally would like to see it stay in, and then taking out the designated, sounds good to me.
So currently, if it stays in and somebody wants to build a hangar now and a piece of commercial property, they could do it.
Right, if it's owned commercial.
In a way, it's currently where, they could do it if it was at a designated air park.
Right.
We don't have a designated airport, so definitely they can do it.
Or, can we move it to a special use? So you can do it either way, special use says you have to go through a more formal process where the public weighs in. Right now it's permitted because they exist. I don't know if we can do that because they already exist.
You could do that, you could move it to a special use. I would just caution the planning commission, this is going to be like a hot topic item and I would hate for it to bog down your whole amendment over this one use topic. Not to say that you shouldn't do something if you think that it's right and you have strong feelings about it, but at the same time, this may be one of those things where this whole amendment blows up over one use section, it could slow down the process.
What I'm concerned about, Sarah, is when we had the public hearing about the air park, all these people showed up, it was a very contentious issue. I thought perhaps we could avoid some of that by taking it out and then readdressing it. When we do the master plan and the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, instead of having this in here, which again, makes it confusing because why are we talking about it if, you know, this is in here? And we don't have a designated air park. I mean, I don't even know what the definition of a designated air park is, but I guess I'd be more comfortable taking it out of here and then dealing with it when we deal with the master plan and the rewrite of the zoning ordinance.
What if we did take it out and somebody applied and wanted to build a hangar?
They would not be allowed to build a hangar.
Right now?
If you took this language out, they would not be able to build a hangar.
On the, over at Torchport?
Anywhere in the township.
Well, then I say leave it in.
But as, but now that we've said that there's no designated, then they can't, right? If you were saying as it.
The way it's currently worded, they can't because they can't either. So we either have to take, strike the words designated air parts, air parks, and just leave it, seemingly with three options, leave it as airplane hangars, period, or just airplane hangars, take it out altogether, or the other one was move it to a special use.
Or change the wording and say airport hangars at Torchport Airport.
That's what I like, that wording.
Yeah.
Can we be?
That way Dick's not building a hangar at East Bay.
Right.
It can only be done at Torchport.
I am concerned that this will consume the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Like just touching it at all, at all, well, that will be the meeting and anything else in here will.
Well, I think even leaving it in does that too, you know, whether it's in there, however it's written, is going to, is going to do that. Take it out of here, then we have our special set of meetings to deal with the master plan and the zoning for an air park.
Yeah, I think we need to do that for sure.
But when will that be done?
I don't know.
And what if a guy wanted to build a hangar tomorrow? He's got to wait until we get this figured out? Yeah, I'm not either.
They need a process whereby they can do that in, between now and then. So I think that's what we should shoot for some, if you, if we want to make some sort of change, I guess now, but I, I would feel good about taking that away from them.
Well, and I tend to agree about leaving it in there now, and the reason is, is because if for some reason we were to get hung up, if, if we could look ahead and see that we could get the, if we knew for a fact we could address this airport rezoning issue within the next three months or say, even six months, pretty quickly, and get it done, signed, sealed, and delivered, knew that could happen, then I'd say let's strike it. But we don't know what other things might come up, and it might get delayed, just COVID might hit, we might not be able to meet effectively. And then all of a sudden, we do end up incurring the wrath of a lot of people because now we're saying that, wait a minute, I've been part of this air park for a long time and I definitely appreciate the fact it's not designated, but I'm concerned that all of a sudden we have something could blow up at us. And I think it, my first inclination was taking it out was less volatile than leaving it in, but now I'm thinking about, I think leaving it in for now might be better. Just because I'm not, we don't have a guarantee of how quickly we can move ahead on this. That would be a piece, I feel very strongly that, Sarah, this has to be, this whole rezoning look, it has to be one of our highest priority items.
Absolutely.
Once we get through this thing. And like hitting it in January and trying to crystallize that, because then we're not hitting, and then come back right away and then say, that may be struck when we do another deal.
Yeah, and I, I feel comfortable leaving the language as is because the planning commission has approved airport hangars in that location, so I would say past interpretation of designated air park includes that area where hangars have been constructed because in the, there's been past decisions, right or wrong, but I, I think that you could justify saying, we believe that's an air park and that's why we've approved these hangars there. But if it's something you want to move to a special use, you know, or something like that, but I agree, I mean, I think that it is very optimistic to think that we'd be done in six months with, you know, master plan and zoning ordinance, just because the zoning ordinance amendment is going to take six months and we need to do the master plan before that, you know, type of thing. We don't have to do them completely separate, they may be kind of together, but six months is a very tight deadline to, to say to do that, and then who knows what happens, like you say, and it'll be three years, five years later, and it'll be a whole new planning commission, and who knows, you know, potentially. And everybody forgets about it, nobody's here, that's here today and we never come back to it. I don't know, I mean, that's extreme, but we get busy, get hung up on one task for two or three years and you forget about some of these other things that happen.
Can I ask a silly question? What, what do we have to have done by December 6th?
The moratorium is precluding what, building permits from being issued?
Any review or permits for anything in the village business or commercial district.
So, and maybe Jason to answer directly.
Could you guys say, we'll keep putting this off, we'll do it a couple, you know?
No, no.
This doesn't have to be done by the December 6th?
We, we ideally would want to vote on accepting this or approving this in our December 6 meeting. That would be the ideal.
Right before the moratorium expires.
Right before the moratorium expires. So we, we do need to agree one way or accept one way or another as far as how to address this, this item, item 19.
Okay.
Preferably tonight, if not tonight, then a week from tonight.
And then after the moratorium's over, then we can go back and?
Yes, after the moratorium is, well, after the moratorium, if we approve something, then we have something in place, and this is some great changes here that have happened.
Okay.
Putting the airplane hangar thing aside for a second, some good stuff in here, it helps us address potential things that might be coming down the pipe pretty quickly. And then we come back, we do the master plan, we look at that again, come back, we visit this, and, and even before then, that air park issue.
Okay.
We got to look at that zone.
That makes, I thought we were trying to get this all done for the December 6th meeting.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay.
Just this document you're looking at right now.
Okay.
So tough issue here, number 19. Laura, what is, or should we do a vote on that, or should we?
You can do like just a straw poll kind of, you don't have to do a formal motion if you don't want to.
Would you recommend keeping it in, changing it, or removing it? Keep the word exactly, words exactly as they are?
Yes.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I, I think so that we can, I agree with your concern about that point, perhaps holding up all the other changes, good ones that we're making, knowing that we will readdress it after we deal with the, leave it in as is.
I'm for taking the whole thing out, but I can live with leaving it in.
Would you leave it in as it is or reword it?
As it is.
I would leave it as is.
I would leave it as is.
I'm for leaving it in as is as well.
The eyes have it, we leaving it as it is. Okay, other comments on 12.1? One, the, the reference to dispensaries or cannabis is not here.
Would you like me to add that in here?
That's what we talked about in the village business.
Yeah, this doesn't have that same list, but I can put in right here, yeah.
Because this does allow special use sexually oriented businesses.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that for commercial?
I don't know, I mean, it does, so that's why we don't have the same paragraph, we had the other one.
But I'll put no marijuana on that, may as well over here.
14. Under A.
I'm listening, Andy, are you suggesting that, that is listed as part of the special uses?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm not sure what I'm suggesting frankly at this point.
Just to say, I think in the introductory paragraph, right, to say that adult use marijuana is not a permitted use.
Yes, that's where I was trying to do, was it would, because it seems like if it's not going to be listed, then, well, I guess if it's not listed, then it can't be done. So say it again, Sarah.
Something along the route of no adult use marijuana businesses permitted or something like that.
Yes, explicit, that's what I was suggesting, but I, I'd open it up to the group.
Do you have to put "dul" in there?
No marijuana? I mean. Well, recreational use is only if you're over a certain age, so it's adult use anyways, where the medical is only allowed, medical you have to permit, but the recreation is allowed unless you say no. So that's why a lot of times you see in the ordinance is they don't talk about medical, but they talk about recreation, and I guess people get away from calling it recreational marijuana, they just call it adult use marijuana.
Oh.
I think that's the more PC way to say it, I don't know.
So do we need to call something out specifically to not include it? Because that's my read of 1203. It says, you know, A is, here's what's permitted. The section, then 1203 says, hey, if the neck, if, if the use is not on the next list, it's not allowed, period. There's another list of 19 things. Those have to go through the special process.
Yeah, I think it's consistent with the village business language. This section is not consistent with the village business language in general, but the marijuana carrying it over, because we have it in that village business to carry it over to here might make sense.
Okay. Everyone agree with that?
Are we okay with having sexually oriented businesses in there?
You have to allow them somewhere.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Oh, you have to.
That, you can, you can not allow them in the township, not put them in the ordinance, but they are a highly, there's a lot of case law around sexually oriented businesses, and when they come in, when typically those types of businesses come in, they go, okay, it's going to cost me this much to open, it's going to cost me this much to go to court, that's my budget, because they just expect to go to court overall. So that's why a lot of the language, you don't see it here, but it's about the same in all ordinances, because we can't regulate the use itself, you regulate the secondary effects to the use, because the courts have told us we can regulate the secondary effects because nobody wants these uses in their communities. So it's just one of those things where typically we put them in a district somewhere, there's, this isn't a large district, if we don't have it in there, we'd probably have to add it in if somebody came along. So if it was something you were passionate about, I'd talk with the attorney to see if it's something to not leave in there.
I think it's very highly unlikely anyone is going to come here and propose that they.
It'd be an interesting public hearing. So, so any other comments on? 12.03 or 12.0, actually the remainder of the document at this point.
Just a question, I guess it's a comment. So if something's not listed in section A, special uses, there's no avenue to build it.
Right.
It makes me wonder what's not on the list.
Yeah.
That we would want, but I guess we, I wouldn't want to also say, let's gin up 15 ideas to throw down here either, but it is, does seem kind of limiting, is that intentional?
Yeah, I think that, I hate to kind of say this again, but I think during the rewrite, some of that'll get flushed out.
Okay.
You know, it is, it, it can be limiting and, you know, somebody, the, the only alternative, if I tell them, no, you can't have it, it's not listed, would be to amend the ordinance to allow, to allow it in that district. And you'd go through that process, but hopefully we'll deal with a lot of that with the rewrite.
And what was the history on why the grocery and convenience store, more than 5,000 square feet?
Yeah, we, so up in section 12.02A, 2, and 3, it used to just say grocery stores and convenience stores, so they were used as by right. But then the planning commission, a couple of meetings ago, wanted to limit the size of those as used as by right. So instead of just allowing any size grocery store as a use by right, there's going a grocery store less than 5,000, so then we needed to say, if they're over 5,000, what happens to them? And that's how they got brought into the special use provisions.
But if you have those and you're over 5,000, you have to.
Right, right, you wouldn't be able to have them anywhere in the community. But in the. But in the in the village business, we allow for anything over 3,000 square feet to be a special use permit in those types of uses. And so I think to be consistent with, you know, we allow them there and this is a broader commercial district, so larger sizes. And I can reformat the end of this to match the village business.
Thank you. We're nearing the home stretch here. Any other? Questions or comments on this? Document? Hearing none at this point. So Sarah, I think the next steps would be. There's a few tweaks that came out of tonight. Uh, some of them might be, might actually appear as relatively big, but they're more formatting and just reconfiguring, but they're not really significant wording changes.
Yeah.
But it does not appear at this point that we need the special meeting a week from today, because I think we've made it through our objective. I I. Discuss with the the rest of the the group here, I mean, does that, do you agree, we do not need a meeting this week?
So where do we go from here then?
Uh, the next meeting, if we do not have a meeting next week, the next meeting would be December 6th, which is a public hearing. And that would have all of your cleaned up language from tonight, you'd be reviewing for that meeting and receiving public input. So the only, if you were. I happen to agree, I don't think there's any big content changes, it's more formatting and tweaking of words. But if you wanted to look at a cleaned up finalized version next week, so you're more comfortable with the public hearing, that would really be the only. You know, hopefully the only reason to do that. But if you're comfortable saying, yeah, you know, content wise, we didn't change too much, so. Um, if we need to tweak some of the formatting or something at the public hearing, that's always an option, we can. At the public hearing, you you know, you get input from the public, you can make changes at that meeting too. So, um, it, this isn't necessarily the final, final form, once you hear the public input, you can always make changes if there's some sort of an error that I made. In trying to gather what you said tonight, you can also make changes at that meeting as well.
And the other thing that could happen, I don't, hopefully not likely, but. If there's something that some compelling comes forward at the public hearing, something like, whoa, we missed that, whether it was a mistake or not, it just, we just didn't think about it. Then our next steps there, it might be, we'd have to either solve it right then and there and then agree on it and vote on it. Or we'd have to do another emergency kind of special meeting, which we could do, but we do run the risk because the moratorium runs out, so.
Yeah.
We're a little bit bound there.
Yeah, we kind of, we're hitting up against that boundary anyway, so if we get to the public hearing and you need more information, somebody rings up a compelling, uh, topic. We do always have, our regular meeting is the following week, so we can throw it on that agenda to discuss it. But if we make any major changes, we'd have to have another public hearing, which is about a month out from whenever we make that decision because of publication deadlines. So.
There was that one thing that we didn't go back to, which was the, um. And maybe we were.
3,000.
But yeah, the 3,000, so that would be the one potentially major thing if what you found, which I wonder how many applications you leave them fine.
Right. I was gonna say, I don't know that, we may have had one, but everything, you know, the only thing I could think of is maybe green. In the last three to five years would be probably one of the only buildings. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, I can look it up and get you an answer for it.
So the question still stands, do we need a meeting next week or not? I was just maybe informally, what do you, how do you feel about, do you, would you be feel better coming back, even if it just briefly next week? Looking over the final changes one last time before going into the public hearing? Or you feel comfortable enough with where we discussed in the document to? Do it at the. The meeting the 6th?
I think everything is minor except for that one thing, if it's unlikely that, if we're not going to change that, then absolutely skip the next meeting.
Bill?
I've got maybe an amendment to that, we we've talked about tonight. Looking at the ordinance. Talking about the master plan and. What a rough schedule might be. We could all, we could look at the edits that Sarah makes and say, yep, they seem consistent with what we talked about. And we could spend some time talking about what the next, mentioned three months, six months. I've talked about some special area plans, maybe for the hamlets or villages in the airport. We might want to. Make use of next week's special meeting to do more than just look at the final edits, so we feel good when we get here on the 6th. And take some time to think through what we want to try and accomplish with the ordinance, the master plan. And combine those things in a special meeting, because we might need a special meeting to start to work through that anyway. That's an idea.
So a question for for you, Sarah, is if we were to take a route like that to modify the next meeting, the special meeting. With a little bit broader. Uh, kind of developing some plans of how we would kind of walk through these things over the, say, the next six to nine months. Um, and think through some of those and maybe even lay out, would it would be, is that enough time to provide, you know, some information or even assign us to review some things before coming in?
Yeah, it would depend on how much detail you want, I would say that for next week's meeting, uh, there probably would not be much from staff in it. As far as moving forward, because I have to get all this out to you tomorrow because of the holiday for next week's meeting. Um, and I just don't have that capacity to. Read through and go, okay, the master plan needs to be changed here, here and here, and the zoning, you know, do some of that work. Um, but if you want to have some kind of preliminary discussions about it and kind of look through the master plans and zoning ordinances on your own and. Come back and go, this is what I think we need to to work on and start that discussion we can. Um, or it's something we can, you know, do at a later time as well, it would just be. What everybody's comfortable with, I mean, we are going to have, we're going to have that doc, it's just, do you want to have it? Now or do you want to wait probably until, I guess I would say the new year, just because we have, you know, we're coming into the holidays and.
I vote not to spend a holiday reading the master plan.
I can't imagine.
Barbara, any compelling thoughts one way or the other?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I I guess I'm good either way.
Others?
I've been here so much, I feel like they're gonna start charging me rent. I go, I mean. I'm whatever's best for the township, so.
I I would say, Bill, I really like your suggestions a lot, um, and I think. But I think we would, we won't have the meeting next week, I think, I think there's enough going on, I I think that we can. Papple it forward, get on board on the December 6th. But then Sarah, I think early part of December. Um, either a special meeting, it may, it may require a special meeting because we're going to be tied up at the December 6th with obvious things. But maybe shortly thereafter, a week after that, we should come up, we do a special meeting where we just kind of lay things out and it might be helpful too, because we'll get some input from the public, we'll see some reaction to this document. And it'll cause us to, you know, really kind of kick off and running and right front and center on that is that whole airport issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so, uh, do we, do we need to have a a motion regarding this document at this point?
Um, no, no, you know, basically that there's general consensus on the. Things we talked about and we'll be coming back for the public hearing, the public hearing has already been published and posted.
That's my question.
So we'll just have to update the language and get it posted on the website. Cause the public hearing notice says that it'd be available after December 2nd, in case we have that meeting, uh, next week, but since it's, we'll have it done earlier and online and available for the public. To review and comment on, so no action necessary.
Okay, so we can move into public commentary?
Yes.
Is there any public commentary?
Oh, come on now.
Smart kid, smart kid.
What did he say?
I didn't pull out a card.
And then, so I guess now, unless there's any discussion or any other items, uh, we can move to adjourn the meeting, do I have a motion to?
I do have a board comment.
Sure.
And I was told. Do you want us to try to move our meetings?
I, um.
Since we're all here.
No, I was gonna ask about it when we worked on our calendar, which isn't until January, but I have another, here's. There's another meeting that's scheduled Tuesday nights at the same time and they became clients after Torch Lake was client, so I told them. I'm not, I I'm committed, I can't do anything about it. And they said, well, we don't like any other night of the month, and I said, well, I don't, I told you I couldn't do it.
Which is Milton, right, Milton Township?
Yeah, so, um, then I was like, well, maybe I could ask when it comes up, just as a topic, I'm not pushing one way or another. That was a conversation that I had. I don't know with individuals or whatever, but, um, you know, if you would entertain it, I would appreciate it, but at the same time. Like I said, I told them upfront, the only other thing though, that I would like to say about it is if that, if you moved your meeting to the first week of the month. It would help with zoning amendments to get to the county, so that they would be, they're easier to get on that next month's agenda. So the county requires a copy of our minutes to go in the packet to get to the county and then they have deadlines, their meeting is the first week of the month. So sometimes it's tight between the meetings to get the minutes and get everything into them. So that they can get it on the next agenda, so we kind of, sometimes we end up missing a month that slows down the process for an amendment. Depending on how the calendar sits and when minutes come in. But. I'm not going to tell you, you have to, you know, you have to move it to do that, it's just, it's a little tighter on our inside, in the office.
So there's two, two things that question, first, moving it to the first week of the month? The next one was moving it to a different day of the week? Or not?
Right, right. Um, so moving it in general, but there's two different reasons why I would ask that, but like I said, we can keep it, put me on the spot, Jason.
Well, no, I. Sarah's in a predicament, I'm here to help her out. We're here to make you happy.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, full disclosure, I told them, I'm like, I'm committed to that night, but then the more I thought about it was, you know, it does help at the county level too.
For what it's worth, I'm I'm open for moving it, I mean, I'm very flexible, so.
Thank you.
I have a question then for Sarah Jackie and Bob. If we change the meeting, would that interrupt the flow for any of your other meetings, the board meeting? The CBA meeting, would that create a problem?
The CBA is that, as we go reading to the third week.
Right.
So that that needs to be a problem, which you try to do it third week of the year.
I think it might actually help with some of the flow to the board, because sometimes the amendments come back from the county. And they come to the planning commission and the board packets are getting put together, you know, the agenda is getting put together the day after the planning commission meeting, so that's kind of a tight turnaround. So if you did push it back up to the first week, it could. Help move some of that around, um, potentially for the board packet, doesn't occur. Every month or that frequently, but sometimes if you're trying to get something to the board. That's a tight window to turn around and there's not usually minutes then available, it's something thrown on the board, uh, kind of the night of their meeting.
So what I'm hearing is, is that it seems kind of. Logical for us to move it to the first week of the month, because it seems better, if there doesn't seem to be a reason not to, is there?
I can't think of.
So it seems like, do we have to?
So we're going to be setting our calendar. The by, do the bylaws say January specifically? The bylaws might say you set your calendar in January, which is interesting because your calendar only goes to the end of the year anyways, so your first meeting, you're not, you know. But we could look at that and it could be something, maybe we could just throw on for the December regular agenda to discuss the meeting dates. Just kind of to keep that in mind.
Something we'd have to vote on and get a motion.
Yeah, you'd make a motion and then we'd have to change the bylaws to update to reflect that if there's interest in it. So, yeah, and hopefully you'll have your calendars then too, so you can take a look and see what, if you have anything that's a conflict.
Anything else for this evening?
We're gonna deal with it in December and decide. What we're doing, I don't know that we have any applications, that would be an issue right now.
At least something for us to think about, right?
Absolutely. So do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
You do.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Barbara did. Thank you all for staying late tonight, it was great, at least we got through it, it was very effective.
As long as everybody is still here, I like the interest.